Prior meetings are available on the city website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by this planning commission.
State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve a community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle-Wortman Associates.
If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that might disrupt this meeting, please either switch it to silent mode or turn it off. At this time, I ask the planning commission recording secretary Kathy Zarnigey to conduct the roll call.
Mr. Beekner?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Parakis?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
More present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we will, we have the approval for tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion? Mr. Fox, seconded by Mr. Faison. Any discussion? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from our October 28, 2025 meeting. Do we have a motion? Mr. Lambert, seconded by Mr. Beekner. Any discussion, questions, comments? I think we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Abstein.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Upstream.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. If anyone is here who would like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, please sign in.
Madam Chair, am I going to use the timer for this?
Yes, please. You'll have three minutes. It'll go yellow, you'll have a minute, and then red.
Good evening, everyone. We're in a new era in Troy. Departing council member Ellen Hoderick, who came up alongside several members of this commission, was a moderate who was very attuned to NIMBY complaints in the city. Now, five out of the seven city council members are Democrats. I don't think we've ever seen that in the history of Troy. And they have an interest in policy changes to improve housing affordability. And based on recent trends in Troy, the next mayor will likely also be a Democrat who also prioritizes affordability. Rocky Rukowski, eat your heart out. So the changing politics of Troy, along with trends in the planning world that you will hear at every planner's gathering that Mr. Trent invites you to, all point to one conclusion: The era of exclusive R1 single-family zoning in Troy is coming to an end. I want to urge the planning commission to look to rezoning the whole east side of Livernoy from Walsh College down to Big Beaver. This is prime land right next to two of the biggest attractions in Troy, the Civic Center and the heart of the Big Beaver Corridor on the eastern side. And yet, it's mostly empty grassland and pavement, and almost all zoned R1C or R1E, which speaks to a lack of, I think, strategic vision for Livernoy by city council and by the planning department. This should really be a mixed-use, walkable residential-commercial area to capitalize on proximity to these other attractions and to form one of our city centers. Mr. Carlisle, with his recommendation to grant the RT rezoning request before you today, is likely to say as much. So Troy Trails North is the development you'll be looking at today. It's asking for a conditional rezoning from R1C and R1E to RT. They're proposing around 40% single-family detached units, 60% townhome and flat-style residences, which seems to me like a reasonable mix. And so, please grant them the rezoning. The lots are too big, 6,600 square feet. They should really be limited to 5,000. That's all they need to be. There are 124 extra parking spots, which we won't need in the area of robotaxis. And in the name of, all this in the name of greater density on Livernoy. You might also consider asking for one or two small commercial units along Livernoy, like the 7-Eleven at Crooks and Waddles, which really generates a lot of pedestrian activity, including from Walsh College. And I just want to add, Troy Trails South was also developed by this developer further down on Livernoy. They were originally going to make 30 attached units. That was sort of de-densified to 14 detached million-dollar, single-family home units, supposedly for economic reasons. I would ask you that if you approve this development today, please attach conditions to your approval to prevent Mondrian from de-densifying its new development at any point after approval. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you please ask the gentleman to state his name for the record?
Could you please do that?
Fabrice Miedowskis, resident of Troy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda for tonight? Okay, thank you. Normally, I don't address public comment, but I'm just going to take a quick minute because I know this came up with Fabrice before. You know, that was supposed to be for people who are talking about something not on tonight's agenda. And the reason, you know, this commission has actually considered moving our agenda around and moving items that are not on the agenda to the end. But the reason we don't do that is we'd like people who don't want to sit through the meeting, who have something to say, they can come up and give their public comment. If you're here to talk about something that we're going to discuss tonight on the agenda, we felt that it made the most sense for you to be here, to sit through, listen to the presentation of the city, listen to the deliberations of the planning commission, and then comment at that time. I've been on the planning commission for six years. There's never been a time that we have not allowed the public to come and speak, whether it's a public hearing or not. Okay, so moving on, I'm going to move to item five, which is the public hearing for the conditional rezoning application, JPCR 2025-009. It's proposed Troy Trail North, east of Livernoy and north of Big Beaver, PIN 88202210134, Section 22, from R1C one-family district to RT one-family attached district. I believe that before we do the, Ben gives the presentation, we're going to show a video with sound.
Theoretically.
Okay.
We tested it three times today.
All right, let's do it.
It's going to be up here, obviously.
Tableau by Mondrian delivers residences that are refreshing and exhilarating. These are spaces where their owners find themselves filled, spaces that are designed for elegant living. Tableau's exciting new development, Troy Trail North, is planned on a 33-acre site and, once approved, will be comprised of 156 total units across three different home types. In addition to the abundance of open green space throughout the community, Tableau has planned the following: 56 units of single-level living residences that range from 800 to 1,250 square feet, 37 townhome residences of 1,800 square feet, and 63 single-family homes whose square footages will range from 2,150 for the single-story homes, up to 3,900 for the two-story homes. What's also compelling about Tableau's plan for Troy Trail North is that it enhances the Troy Trail system's walkability. And five and a half acres will be donated to the city for a community park that will include $300,000 worth of installed playground equipment for the public to enjoy. Tableau by Mondrian is proud to present this thoughtfully considered project to the planning commission because it carefully addresses the various needs of the Troy housing market segments, whether they are first-time homebuyers, empty nesters, or the general market for new construction, single-family homes. A market that Mondrian Properties has diligently served for more than three decades in southeast Michigan.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Ben, would you like to start your, I don't know if you can tap it out?
I don't know how I follow up with that.
Tough act to follow there.
I'll go through my boring PowerPoint now. I do actually have a fairly long PowerPoint, so I'll try to go through this as succinctly and quickly as possible. So, before you tonight, it's a proposed conditional rezoning. The site, I think we're all pretty familiar with, is the 33.9-acre site. It's current Motor City Church. There are two buildings on the site. These are proposed to be removed, and the applicant proposes to redevelop the site. Chairman Parakis reminded me today, we did actually have a proposal to reuse the southernmost building on the site. Obviously, that is not on the table tonight, and they are proposing to take down that building as well as part of the site plan. The site is currently zoned R1C, single-family residential, and again, they're seeking conditional rezoning and preliminary site plan approval. I do want to remind the planning commission that, for this matter, you are a recommending body. This is a conditional rezoning where the applicant voluntarily offers conditions, and those conditions go with your recommendation to the city council for final deliberation. The proposed project, as noted, does require conditional rezoning. The applicant proposes to rezon the entire site to RT, one-family attached, to build single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments. We do note that all the housing forms and uses are permitted in the RT district. With regards to zoning, as noted, the site is zoned R1C, one-family residential. We do note that in the area, there's a number of, mix of different housing zoning districts, primarily including R1C and R1B, CF community facility, PUD, neighborhood node, and O zoning districts. So there is a lot of difference, a variety of zoning up and down that corridor. We do also note that to the south, south of PUD 114, there is existing RT one-family residential zoning, so this would match that zoning in that location. We do note, with regards to mix of uses, there is a number of varied mix of uses in the area, including single-family residential, community facility, public park, office, and commercial. With regards to the master plan, the master plan identifies this site as single-family residential. And in the master plan, it says that the predominant land use in Troy is single-family residential. This category is intended to preserve the existing quality residential neighborhoods in the city while recognizing the need for other uses that support the main function of the residential areas. We note that approximately 75% of the total land of the proposed development is a detached single-family residential use. So again, that use does clearly align with the master plan. The remaining 25% of, in terms of land area, is a mix of multiple-family and attached single-family housing. The master plan also goes on to say that the inclusion of housing types, variety of housing types, in the single-family district is consistent, provided that the housing is contextually appropriate, thoughtfully integrated with the single-family areas, and functions effectively as a transitional buffer to more intensive land uses. Additionally, going on further in the master plan, it does identify the community need for housing diversity, and this further supports this approach by this proposed development. So overall, with regards to the master plan, we do find it is consistent with the master plan because it successfully integrates a mix of housing types that not only enhances the diversity in the area, but does serve as a transitional buffer between the single-family portion, which is in the lower end of the development, to the Walsh College to the north. The development does include three distinct housing types that does offer a variety of options that appeal to a broad market of both existing as well as future Troy residents. So again, with regards to the master plan, we do find the proposed application consistent. The applicant has offered nine conditions as part of the application. Again, these are voluntary offered by the applicant. The primary one is the preliminary site plan, which I'll go over. All these other conditions are really baked into the preliminary site plan approval. With regards to site layout, the applicant has submitted a total of 156 unit residential projects. In addition, as highlighted in the video, they are improving access to the trail, as well as donating about five acres to the city as part of the park system, including that playground structure that's located to the east of the proposed housing product. I rudimentarily outlined the different housing types, which looks very sophomoric compared to the video we saw. But outlined in red are the single-family lots. Those are located to the southern end and eastern end of the site. There are 63 of them. Outlined in yellow are 37 townhomes. You note there is a kind of a island or donut of townhomes in the middle of the stacked flats, which are outlined in purple. The development does include internal sidewalks connecting all the different housing types, as well as connection to the sidewalk on Livernoy, as well as future access to the Troy Trail. Again, 5.3 acres would be dedicated to the city as part of a community park. It's worth noting that the park would be dedicated and then futurably maintained by the city as well. One of the site plan discussions, and we've gone back and forth with the applicant on this, is two items. The first is that townhome cluster, or donut, or island, or whatever you want to call it, in between the stacked flats. We raised that as a potential question as to why you're putting all the townhomes, you know, or some of the townhomes kind of in the middle of that, of those stacked flats. We found that maybe there's some better arrangement to move it so it's consistent or adjacent to the other existing townhomes. The applicant thinks this better, it works better for integration, and I'm sure they can speak into more detail about why they laid it out the way they did. The second issue that we raised was the frontage on Livernoy, in particular, to those stacked flats, and kind of the, either side garage door orientation of them, or the rear elevation orientation. The applicant notes that there's a significant grade change between Livernoy and, to further east in the site, that with landscaping and other means, you actually will not see those elevations. They'll be covered either by the grade and/or by the, by future vegetation. And they actually have a graphic to show how that is represented. With regards to the density, we do note the density complies. The minimum allowable density, and this is 5,000 units per acre, they're proposing a density total of 9,000 units per acre, 9,000 square feet per unit. So essentially, they're asking for half the allowable density that would be permitted under the RT zoning. We note, again, that all the residential products that are being proposed are all permitted housing types in this district. We note that the single-family homes, the minimum square footage is 6,600 square feet. Again, there are some that are larger, but the smallest one is 6,600 square feet. That also complies with the minimum square footage requirement for RT single-family lots. And again, all the RT lot dimensional standards have been met. With regards to landscaping, again, this is another point of discussion that we spent a lot of time with the applicant discussing. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that requires, between different housing types and different land uses, you do need a screening requirement. It does not differentiate if it's on the same parcel or not, so there's no, it's between land uses, not parcel divisions. So by ordinance, they are required to put in trees to separate the single-family from the non-single-family portion of the development. They are by ordinance deficient by 29 spaces, 29 trees. As part of their justification, they do note that they're trying to make this an integrated community, so they don't want as much screening as required to allow for some more integration between the housing products. They have put the required trees on site, they're just not putting it in the linear screen that's required by ordinance. They have a very detailed architectural program, and I'm going to actually let the applicant go into much more detail about the proposed architecture and how it fits. I will note that there are two different types of townhouse elevations. There's a two and a three-story. This is a three-story elevation. There are varied facades that will break up the monotony, and we do know that each unit has an individual entry and garage. This is the two-story townhome elevation. The applicant has submitted a variety of elevations for the single-family homes. They are more or less a traditional neighborhood-style home. There are a variety of elevations to break up monotony, and these all are front-loaded The other housing type is a multi-unit stacked flats. Again, they're all single living on each floor, but they are stacked on top of each other. They do include individual balconies and stairwells and architectural facades. As far as I could tell from the elevations, there was just one elevation type for each stacked flat. However, if there are different, if there are different ones, the applicant can explain that in more detail. This is the graphic that the applicant wanted to show about the grade change from Livernoy to the product, stacked flats. You can tell there's a significant grade change in that vegetation would really screen that elevation. So that's how they plan to address the concern that I had raised with regards to the frontage on Livernoy. And this is a graphic of the entrance off Livernoy to the development. So, the planning commissioners are well aware, there are five standards that the planning commissioners should consider as part of the rezoning. Are the conditions proposed designated to protect public health, safety, and welfare? Is the conditions consistent with the master plan? Are the conditions proposed in accordance with all the revisions of the zoning ordinance? Can the development be served by public facilities and services? And lastly, does the proposed conditions or development ensure compatibility with adjacent land uses? This would be something the planning commissioner should consider as part of deliberation. Because this is a site plan, there are also site plan standards the planning commission should consider. There's three of them: consistency and compatibility of existing land uses, incorporation of best architectural practices, and enhancement of character, environment, and safety for pedestrian and motorists. So, we are recommend that the planning commission hold a public hearing, consider public comments, and address the items of the applicant, compliance with the conditional zoning standards, compliance with the site plan standards, and discussion of those site layout and orientation points I did raise. We do note that if the planning commission does recommend approval of the rezoning as well as a site plan, they're committed to condition of approval of the onsite screening between the single-family and stacked flats, or at least a discussion of how that's addressed. As well as, we do note, the applicant did provide a wetland delineation. It has expired from what we require, so they will need to submit an update of wetland delineation. So with that, I am open to any questions? Yes, the wetland delineation prior to final approval, site plan approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Beekner?
I have two questions about the park. Have we ever had a park dedicated to the, to the city? Is the city interested? Is it a hassle? Is that, obviously, it's a great thing, I think, but what does the city think? Who decides that one?
Well, ultimately, it's the city council decides. It's their determination if they accept the park and, under what conditions they accept it. It has run through city staff. City staff is supportive of the donation of the park. I think the details about how it's done, future maintenance, potential issues, liability, et cetera, would be something that would be worked out and determined as part of the discussion with the city council. But ultimately, it's the city council's determination.
Thank you. And then, is there any parking, if you went to that park?
No, and that's another point. We had a lengthy discussion with the applicant about parking. And one thing I will note is that a lot of the area where the park is, is actually in floodplain. So in order to put parking in for the proposed park, they would have to either alter the floodplain location, which has significant ramifications, or alter the site layout. That being said, there is parking for the trailhead, which is just south in this approximate location, so it's not a very far walk to get to the playground. And in addition, the applicant, as part of their discussion, really felt that the playground was really to serve the users of the trail itself and not have dedicated parking where people drive just to use this playground.
That makes sense. Cool, thank you.
Mr. Fox?
So, just to be 100% sure I'm understanding correctly, all of the green space to the east of that back row of housing, all, that whole rectangle is what will be the new park?
Yeah, it's approximately five acres.
Okay. Now, is the wetlands the reason why there isn't a lot of tree coverage included on the west side of the trail?
I think it's an existing condition. There's not much trees there.
Okay.
Based on the previous development of the site.
Okay.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Oh, go ahead. I just have a question on page 121. There is a broken gray line that runs towards the east side of the property. I just want to know what that is. And you will have to...
Oh, that, that's, so that dash line is, that, I don't think you need to. So that dash line is what you're talking about? It runs basically this, this general location?
Yeah, somewhere.
That, that separates the area that we dedicated to the city as part of the park? So everything to the...
Not that.
No?
Not that. There is, if, you will have to zoom it a little bit because...
I don't know.
If you zoom it to like a 33%, it will show...
It's actually page 120, and it's the floodplain she's looking at.
Oh, it's page 120?
Yeah, I thought it was the floodplain. It runs all the way from the...
That's the floodplain. That's the demarcation of the floodplain line.
Okay, okay, got it. My other question, that, that round circle thing that you have, that they have there, there is nothing that is going to come on there. It's only just one playground in the other circle. So that round circle just stays the way it is?
Well, I, I, well, I'll leave up the applicant in terms of what they're proposing to donate to the city. Right now, it's shown as nothing in it. However, I think the city, if, when they acquire, could put something in it if they would like to, or could leave it as an open circled space, I would. But I'll defer the applicant in terms of what they're proposing at this time to give to the city as part of that circle area. But yes, I mean, the, to answer your question, right now, there's nothing in here. The playground is in this particular location.
And it can be moved to that bigger circle because it seems so much larger, kind of circle?
I think that's, I think the applicant could address that when they come up.
Okay. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, there's a lengthy traffic study in, in our report. Is there somebody here who can maybe give us a executive summary of what it says?
For the best of my ability, it was reviewed by our traffic engineer. He supported the findings of the traffic study. Ultimately, as we noted, Crooks is a, I'm sorry, Livernoy is a county road, so any traffic improvements would be under the jurisdiction and warranted by the County Road Commission. That being said, this has not gone through final engineering. That discussion about potential road improvements, need for light, need for other safety measures, et cetera, would be under their jurisdiction, which typically happens as part of final engineering. That's about as detailed as I can get right now.
And one other question. I know, because this is conditional rezoning, it's not a negotiation process. We pretty much take it or leave it, although we can make suggestions to the applicant. But when we're looking at similar sites, when we give a, give a density bonus, like for cluster zoning, usually there's some return to the community as far as additional green space. Does this offer us that kind of bonus for the city in exchange for that kind of density bonus?
So it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a rezoning. So it's not a PUD where they're required to give some benefit. The rezoning, you consider the rezoning standards and does it meet the rezoning standards? I think what they would, they would argue, and I'll let them argue this case, but I'll maybe make a few points. They're donating, they're donating land to the, to the city as part of a future public park. They're improving the trail on the future city park as well as a, as a benefit. They're providing a variety of housing options that we are seeking in this community. And furthermore, if you take the straight, if it was a straight rezoning to RT, they could, in theory, ask for almost twice the density that they're asking for. So I think they're really trying to sense a balance between a high-quality living environment and all the benefits they're proposing versus what would be allowed under the RT zoning. But in terms of, there does not need to be a public, quote-unquote, "public" benefit in order to seek a conditional rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Faison?
You talked about the deficient screening between the different housing types, right? So, so just two questions. Did you, though, also say they have enough trees on the site in total?
Yeah, so, yes, they have met the requirement of number of trees on, on site in total, what's required by the ordinance. The difference is it's not in the location required in terms of separation between the different housing types.
Understood. And then, are we able to grant relief on that as part of our deliberation here? Or is it required to have that screening between the different housing types?
I, I would say it's because they have the total number required on, on site, they're not asking for relief in the number. You can certainly have that as a discussion point. It could be a waiver granted by the planning commission. If you feel it's warranted to have that, you know, have that waiver, if you think that, you know, integration between housing, you have the flexibility to grant the waiver. Yeah. They're not asking for less trees than they're required. They're asking simply to put them in different locations. And you have that power to grant it when we talk about street trees and other things that, and parking lot trees, we've, we've had that discussion multiple times.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
But, but just to be clear, it would be in the form of, my understanding is that that...
You can certainly have that as a discussion point. It could be a waiver granted by the planning commission. If you feel it's warranted to have that, you know, have that waiver, if you think that, you know, integration between housing, you have the flexibility to grant the waiver. Yeah. They're not asking for less trees than they're required. They're asking simply to put them in different locations. And, and you have that power to grant it when we talk about street trees and other things that, and parking lot trees, we've, we've had that discussion multiple times.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
But, but just to be clear, it would be in the form of, my understanding is that the applicant is going to come up, and they're going to present, and then we're going to discuss, and it's a public hearing and all that. But at the end of the day, we're having a conversation, and any, it's not a negotiation, so anything that they listen to and want to voluntarily offer, but it's not like we can, I mean, we can, I mean, when you say we can grant a waiver, I mean, it's, it's really, we just have to decide amongst ourselves if we're going to recommend this to city council.
Essentially, yes. Because the site plan, the landscape they've submitted as a condition of their zoning approval, or their, their conditional rezoning, shows it as less trees than, in terms of that location. They're already showing the deviation on their landscape plan, if that makes sense.
So our discussion would be, we would discuss it and decide amongst ourselves, and then if we decide to approve it, it would be, you know, it would be assumed that we're waiving. Okay. Mr. Fox?
Just maybe, let's have a question, more of a comment on the traffic study, because I know there was a question about summarizing air quotes. I will note on page 169 of the PDF, the engineer, after discussing a couple of different topics, they do provide summaries near the end of the document. Specifically, they offer recommendations, which are like actions that they want the applicant to take in order to mitigate traffic issues on the site. The two that they mention are right-turn tapers at both entrances, which it looks like they put in. So if that, that answers the question of, you know, the engineer provided recommendations, and it looks like the recommendations were acted upon.
Sorry, you know, it's funny you say that, Mr. Fox, because I thought that our OHM, in their memorandum on page 293, I thought that they said they don't need the tapers. Do not require acceleration tapers as depicted on the plans.
That's my reading as well. But again, it, the city can opine on a rec, on an opinion, one way or another, but ultimately, it's up to the road commission to determine what, what's warranted or what's not.
Okay. I just thought that was sort of interesting. Okay. Okay, should we, is everyone ready to call the applicant up? All right. Just please sign in.
Good evening, everyone. Xander Bogarts, the architect for the project, here with Tableau by Mondrian, also PEA, the civil engineers. Very excited about this project, and Brenton Bend did a very nice job presenting, mostly to Ben, of course. But it was very nicely summarized, and we, again, we're just really excited about it. We've poured our heart and soul into this project. We really strive to balance the site in terms of single-family and multifamily living, and we've really nestled that multifamily up near Walsh College where it made sense. It's down on the site where Livernoy is up high, which was covered in the presentation. As it was mentioned, we're, the land all across the eastern border is being donated as a park. And we've really, you know, and working with Mondrian is so great because they really, you can really see what they bring to each community. They've been in Troy for a long time, and they've done a very nice job on their developments, and it shows. And so they've, we went through many evolutions of this site, and worked with the city, and, and arrived at this site plan, which we're excited about. I don't have much to talk about tonight. It's, the presentation's been very well. The only thing I can address is the upper left, the upper-left northwest corner of the site, where we talked about the townhouses in the middle surrounded by the multifamily. That's one, one thing I'd like to address. And the second one is the positioning of the multifamily right against Livernoy at the far west end. So, starting with the island, we really wanted to break up the multifamily and really integrate more with, with the other multifamily types, rather than having a stark divide between one multifamily stacked flat living and then the townhouses. We really felt like we were able to blend those two areas together and bring that vibrancy of those two different styles of architecture together, to really try and, again, just blend that, that whole experience of coming from Livernoy through this area down to the single-family towards the trail. And by having those, those townhouses in the center, we, we even came up with a completely separate elevation to really integrate with the multifamily and be extremely complementary. We, it's the same townhouse floor plan. They are actually both two stories. The townhouse is in the middle of the site. They do have some dormers up high, which make it seem like three stories, but it's only two. So we have that kind of vernacular. And then in the center, yeah. So anyways, that's why we really felt that having those in the, in the central part of the island really helps to create more of like a cohesive development, rather than a stark contrast. And then lastly, what I'll talk about is the multifamily right on Livernoy. There is a steep grade change. So Livernoy is up high, and the, and the elevation of the first floor of the multifamily is eight feet below Livernoy. We're also going to have an entry monument and vegetation along Livernoy, which is another four feet, plus the trees. So no matter which way we orient those multifamily buildings, from Livernoy, you won't, you won't be able to see, whether it's garage doors, the front, or the rear. So, and that's why we, again, we nestled those multifamily up in that northwest corner. Anyways, I'm happy to take any questions, and thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Some thoughts. I like the overall plan. I like, I don't mind the integration of the townhomes and the, what are the other ones called?
Flats.
Stacked flats. Okay, yeah. The only thing that looked like a little bit of lack of creativity were the sides of the townhomes, the side elevations. So if you could bring up number, page number 62. And like I say, it just looks like a, you've got a couple of windows in there, a few windows, but it just looks so flat compared to, if you scroll to the, see, it would be the, the one just above that, what is it, 61? Basically, the front elevation. If you scroll down, I don't know if yours works like ours or not.
I'm sorry?
If you can scroll to the front elevation, I believe it's the one prior to this, yes. See, see how interesting the architecture looks? You look at the side, it looks so, ugh. So if you could do something to, maybe give some, like a bar relief, something coming out and in, or something with those windows, something to add a little more interest architecturally, like you have, the front looks phenomenally great. I mean, I love it. But the, the side is just like, flat. So that's one thing. And then if you go to a townhouse number two, that's on slide number 68 and 69. Yeah, okay, so, again, the fronts look great. A lot of, you know, back and forth relief of those, nothing's flat in the front at all, but you get to this, and I see you've made an attempt to add this brick relief popping out, but it looks more like a lick and stick than part of an architectural element. I think you could bring out those windows a bit, maybe make it, not necessarily like a bay window, but something, I don't know, with the bedrooms up there, or, or what, but...
Yeah, those bedrooms, yep.
But, you know, you could pop those windows out a little bit, add a little architectural detail. I like that you put a, a little bit of a roof above it. That's, that's a nice detail. But the brick columns going up just seem like, why are they there? Anyway, those are my thoughts, just architecturally.
Sure, yeah.
Everything else looks absolutely great.
Right, thank you, yeah. Yeah, great, we'll definitely take your comment to heart and discuss it.
Mr. Fox?
May I just inquire? I know I mentioned it during my questions to city staff. So I know the trail's running north-south, and I'm just imagining when you pass noon and when the sun is just beating down from the west side of that trail, like during a really hot summer day, there's no tree cover on the west side. Is that because of the wetlands, or was there something that led to that decision? I was just curious where your thought process was.
Yeah, there were, like you mentioned, is the wetlands is, is one of the, is one of the concerns, and then, you know, it could be up to Troy, you know, up to the, to the city to decide if you want to do that, of course. So, but as far as, you know, as addressing your concern, that's, I don't know, kind of the experience of, you know, of that trail, but, you know, you can be exposed at times and covered at different times, but that's really where, yep.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Thank you. Great, great plan. I totally liked it, and the fact that you have those different color schemes, the different variety housing, and not straight streets, but they are curved. I really liked all that. So A+ on the design part of it.
Thank you.
Sure. My question mostly is in relation to the area that you are providing, you're donating to the city, the five-acre area, and the two circles that sit there. I know currently on the plan, you have a playground, but there is no access point from the, from this development to that. However, there is an access point to the other big circle. So can it be swapped? Can the playground be that? And, because it also has a straight access to that bigger circle and larger playground space?
I suppose it's possible. Again, thank you for the compliments. Swapping those two circles is absolutely a possibility. The reason that we kept that playground to the south was for closer proximity to the parking, to the, to where families could come in and then quickly access the playground. That's why we, it had nothing to do with scope or anything other than easy access to the parking.
I see. So in terms of access, the parking is going to be near the dock park.
Correct.
And from there is where the community, if they want to access this park, can come to.
Correct.
And for the neighborhoods, they're going to be using the trail or the, or the, or the street or walkway that leads up to the bigger circle, and then walk on the trail to the park.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a small footpath there that connects the, the development to the trail, correct?
Okay. One more comment before I, before I give the floor to others. Regarding the, the tree coverage between the different units, housing units that we were talking about, I'm okay with that, personally speaking, and the reason being, I live in a subdivision right now, which was built in the 70s, and the way it is built is, of course, you have a street, you have houses sitting on the street, but also there are homes that back to this really nice green space where they have trampolines, and kids from that house to this house can connect, interact, and have that sense of feeling without any, any, any tree line or any barricades that can prevent that kind of social experience. And on few occasions, I've also seen that the graduation tents have been pitched in that area because it's large enough between homes. So I personally like this, although, yeah, it's different. It's different, but it's still very, 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 I really do like it. Since we don't know where the wetland delineation line is, is, that is something that I guess we need some clarification on? Am I correct on that? We don't have the newer wetland...
There, there was one submitted, and I think it's dated 2021. So they're, as of that, they're staying pretty, they're far out of the wetland.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to change significantly between 2021 and today, but it is a requirement that would be complied, you know, or would be required and submitted as part of final engineering.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Fox?
Hello. OHM, the city's traffic advisor, when they prepared a memo reviewing the, what your engineer had submitted for the traffic plan, they did make a suggestion regarding the south driveway, moving or relocating a crosswalk that's there, so that it actually meets with the edge of the main street going along the south side.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I was just curious your thoughts on that suggestion, and if that is something that you disagree with OHM on, or if that's something. It would be the southern, I think it's right when you enter from the south one, it's that intersection to the left, like right when you enter, it's to the left, and it would basically just be moving a crosswalk like, I don't know, a house down?
Mm-hmm.
So that it actually goes along the side of the road, instead of it like, you got to turn right, cross, turn left, go around.
I have to look into that. This is the, the rendering from the artist. We do have a site plan deeper in the package, but...
It's on page 293 of our agenda packet. Our OHM actually put a diagram, if you're able to bring that up.
Yes.
Yeah, that picture, I don't know if it can be enlarged, so...
Yeah, and I know I point out a very small thing, but that would be overall, because I am a fan of the plan in its current state. It's just these kind of little, getting the last couple of things buttoned.
Oh.
They're suggesting to move that crosswalk to the south.
Oh, the painted crosswalk? Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll do that, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? I mean, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Lambert.
I assume that when you were plotting this out, you were doing some market studies on what would be the best use of this property, and instead of looking at townhomes or flats, did you ever look at maybe smaller, single-family homes that would be more intended for empty nesters?
We, 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 talking to Joe, we looked at everything. We, we, but to answer your question directly, to get that density that we wanted and still create that balance, we, we couldn't get it with a smaller footprint of a single-family home. So we, we, oh my gosh, there were so many renditions we went through, but this felt, we felt hit the sweet spot for what we were looking for, and couldn't work that in. I have seen those developments. I think they work great. We just didn't feel it was a good fit here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Malala Hawley?
Okay, two more quick questions for you.
Sure.
One, just an approximate understanding about the price point of the single-family homes, the townhomes, and the flats. And you said flats are stacked, one on top of each other.
Correct.
However, each of those are independent units.
Correct.
All to be owned, purchased to own.
Correct.
Okay. Can you give us some kind of an approximation here?
I wish I could. It will absolutely be market rate when it, when it comes to, to that point, and, and right now, we just, it could be anyone's guess. I'm trying to sell my house right now, the price I had it in the summer, and the price I had it now is, it's a wild swing. I wish I could answer you, but it will be market rate once, once we come online.
Okay. There is, this is going to be controlled or administered by an HOA, correct?
I believe so, yes.
It's going to be?
Yes, it is an HOA, yeah.
Okay. From the point of view of the park, since that is, well, any liability issues that you have talked, that, that need to be considered here when we, when, if we were to recommend this project over to city council, of course, they're going to do the deep dive into this, but any, any liability issues that we, that, that the city will have to be thinking about? Because this is now going to be, if approved, a city park within a residential area as well? Anything, okay?
No, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would just like to say that I think the overall concept is great. I love the open space. I love the park. I wasn't totally sold on the layout, the, you know, the way the buildings were sort of around circles, but the more I thought about it, and the more I heard about it, and you explained it, I do love the concept of the integrated living, and that is why I'm okay with not putting screening between the living. I like that you're looking at it as one community, different housing types, but still one community, one homeowners, homeowners association. I think that's fantastic, actually. So it's... So, it's not something we always see, so I really do appreciate that. I'm curious about the different housing types. I know there are some ranch options. Is that all going to be market-driven, like you're going to pre-sell them and people get to choose what they want? So if they all happen to want ranches, you're going to sell all ranches, whatever it is? Okay. Okay, I know this is sort of a, just a nitpick, but I have a question about, there was some talk about striped spaces and driveways. I did not understand what that was. Like, when we were trying to, it's on page 16, I believe. I didn't quite understand the striped spaces and driveways and why it was, it's not page Like, so is parking, oh, there it is. It's on page, it is page 16. It is, because it says that we comply with the parking, but it says 12 garage spaces plus four striped spaces and driveways, yeah.
So, I do, I, each unit, stack flat is eight, each building, I should say, has eight units, which requires 16 parking spaces total.
Okay.
Each, but each building only has 12 garage spaces, and they're doing four spaces in the, essentially in the driveway to the stack flats, but they're striping them. So, these are just four outdoor spaces for each building with 12 garage spaces. That adds up to 16 spaces, which is the parking requirement for each individual building.
Okay.
Does that...
Well, I mean, there's actually going to be stripes on the driveway.
That's what the site plan shows. That's to differentiate the four parking spaces.
Okay. Okay, sure. I think that was all the questions that I had. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we're going to go ahead and open it up. So if there's anybody here who'd like to speak on this project, please come up to the lectern now. Go ahead and come on up, please state your name and sign in first, if you could.
Madam Chair, we're going to time these as well.
We will do a timer, everyone gets three minutes. You'll see the yellow light go on when you have a minute left, and then you'll be cut off at the red light.
Is there a pen up at the podium? I know the earlier commenter mentioned they didn't have a pen.
There's two up there.
Counsel, my name is David Savage. I'm a longtime resident of this area, this immediate square-mile block, if you want to call it that. I am an interested party in this area. Like I said, all three of my sons went to Waddell School, which is going to be right behind this development. It's a very nice-looking development. I have to compliment the developer on his proposal, but coming from this area, and with the consistency of this area, I see no reason to increase the density. I would, my preference would be to keep it the zoning that it is right now, just to be consistent with what we've got in that whole neighborhood. I'm concerned, and I have questions about the impacts to, you know, infrastructure. You know, you've got a lot of rainwater, you know, you've got sewage, you've got all the other things from this big development going into the same area. Has that been looked at, addressed? You know, you look at, this is the third development in just the last, what, two years in this square-mile area, which is adding quite a bit of, you know, additional residents, so the schools are going to get impacted quite significantly. And again, so why really increase the density? So as, like I say, as a resident of that area, my preference would be to keep it in the zoning that it is. I liked, there was a page in the submittal, you know, showing the single-family, you know, layout, 74 units. I think that's consistent with the area. I see no reason to vary from that, so I'd like to hear from, you know, I guess, the council, what reason there would be to make the change, you know, from the city, you know, initial plan, master plan, and the current area of the zoning. You know, as a resident, why are we looking to increase the density? I don't see the plus to that. As an additional comment, with the increasing the density, you've got that nature preserve that's part of that walkway. Well, the more people that's there, all, I don't even agree with having a play area there if you're going to call it a nature preserve, because that just drives the animals away, the more people you bring in here. Keep it as a walking path, that's fine. Like I say, I like the looks of it. I think as far as a mixed-unit development, it's very appealing. I think they've done a lot of work in the layout. The developer, I agree, is one of the best I've seen around. There's some other developments, you know, some of the multi-unit developments that I don't like the looks of too well, and so I do think they're, you know, one of the premier developers, but I just don't see a reason to increase the density of the area, so...
Thank you very much.
That's my concerns and comments.
Thank you. Please sign in before you start, thank you. That way I don't have to chase you down later.
I just have a couple of thoughts about, the project is great. It looks beautiful. I think it'll be an asset to the community, but I have a concern. I live just east of the project on Colebrook Drive. Since the walking path was put in, 300 feet from the walking path east, we have had some serious flooding issues. Don't know why, whether it was development from the path, but it's going to be developed property that's going to be given to the city. Is the city going to take care of some issues? Because of the retention pond, I don't even see that in this plot. Will that be something that's looked at to that can control the flooding issue? Because the water does go every bit of 300 feet east of the walking path when we have heavy rains. All of the homes on Talbot Drive, east of the wetland, the homes that back up to the wetlands, all have that same water condition, every one of them. Something maybe to consider what this development, it's a beautiful development, I love it, it looks great, but what is it going to do to the homeowners that have been there for many, many years? I've been there since 73. Love it. But just some consideration, and what are we going to do with the water? Because I believe it's going to be an issue, whatever gets developed, level-wise, I didn't see anything about that raising the level where it is right now, because of where the Zion Temple went in many years ago. The retention ponds seem to have handled the conditions that they needed, but it created water conditions east of that area. Just something, a good thought to think about, what you might do. Because it will be, am I right, city property where the walking path is? Is that going to be donated back to the city? Something that we need to look at, because it's not part of the development. And there's a lot of homeowners there that I believe would be very interested in what decisions will be made for them, because it impacts their house terrible, and I've seen it, because I live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on this? Okay, seeing nobody, I'm going to close the public comment and turn it back to Planning Commission discussion. Mr. Beekner.
For Brent and Ben, can you guys speak to drainage, please?
So I'm not a civil engineer, and our city attorney's not here, but the project engineer for this project is in the audience this evening. Perhaps Mr. Thompson can give a very general summary of how he proposes to dispose of the stormwater that's landing on this site.
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Thompson, but I'll put you on the spot.
I mean, also, my understanding, too, was that this is always going to go to the city engineers, and it would be reviewed at a certain time, and they would make sure that there were no drainage issues. From what I read from the plans, it's being drained elsewhere off the property, and maybe you can also speak to, I read something about filling in the floodplains in certain areas, so you can maybe speak to all of that.
Good evening, John Thompson with PEA, and you just explained it all.
Filling in the floodplain, there we go.
So the site is within an existing floodplain. There is historical flooding issues with the, is it Shanahan or Gibson? I can't remember which. Gibson? As well as that converges into the lane drain, there is backwater curving, backwater flow that's, results from those two drains converging. City engineer is aware of it. They've worked with HRC, the city's consultant, to look at different ways to mitigate, so they're aware of the existing flooding conditions, and they're working on trying to come up with ways to mitigate that. As far as our site's concerned, we will be mitigating the floodplain that we're impacting, so there'll be a compensating cut and fill, so that there'll be no additional floodplain impact due to our development.
And is there a detention or retention pond that this is all directed towards?
Yeah, flooding, flooding and detention are stormwater management or two separate items, but there is a regional detention pond shared between Walsh and the Zion Temple, currently Motor City, and that's an agreement that they've had in place for years. That will be reviewed at final engineering with the city engineer. The site, as you can see, which was all pavement currently, is now going to be 50% green space, so the amount of tributary area going to the detention system will be significantly reduced.
Okay. I mean, usually when we have these conversations, we always say that we're going to leave the place better than what it was before, particularly when it comes to drainage, so can, is it safe to say that the residents who lived east of the trail might experience a benefit from this development, given that we're eliminating all of that pavement, and we're fixing some of the other stuff, like in terms of the retention, the detention basin and all that? I mean, I hope we're not contributing to any, we're not increasing it.
No, we're not increasing. As far as an improvement, I wouldn't expect there to be an improvement due to this development, only because the flooding's associated with the drain systems, the county drains.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions?
Just a quick thought. So, were there, you said the detention or retention ponds was a joint effort between the church and Walsh College? Those retention or detention areas are still going to be there?
Correct. This agreement will transfer into the new ownership.
Okay, and so there was no underground retention or detention areas? In other words, subsurface?
Walsh does have some, but the shared regional detention is all above grade.
Okay, thank you.
That's the beautiful pond that you see as you walk around the pond and sit the outlook.
Okay, very nice.
Okay, thank you very much. Just another comment based on one of the, one of the gentlemen who spoke about during public comment, and really I think part of the development, and, you know, we have to kind of talk about is whether, you know, the parallel plan, I think allows for about 75 houses, and this almost doubles the housing in terms of density. I think one of the motivations for allowing something like this is to offer the different housing types, and that's really, I think, the goal that the city has been trying to figure out is how to offer a variety of housing types. So this offers some stacked housing, some apartments, and townhomes, and so multifamily attached. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Fox.
I know recently we've been attempting to start all of our conversations with the motion, so I would like to offer a motion. However, I will make a comment just leading up to it. I think one of the things that stands out about this property to me is the integration of the different housing types. I mean, this property covers the bandwidth of different types of housing that I grew up in, living around North Oakland, South Oakland County, and I never lived in a property that it wasn't just clean-cut, like you've got the single-family homes here, you've got the, you know, here, here. I think integrating them is very interesting, and I think it's going to lead to a good community feel. So, I would like to offer a motion if the chair is...
I've got a little discussion point before we get into that. I'm in favor of what Ms. Malala Hawley said about the trees between the different varieties of housing. I agree, there should be some pathways through to, so there is a traffic flow between neighbors. I don't want it to see be a wall of solid green that you can't get through. I think it's a nice way to keep the neighborhood, the whole development has one nice neighborhood.
Yep, that's okay. Good point. Mr. Hudson?
I've been on the planning commission probably for about 20 years. About the times, Minnichi started coming before us with his developments, I've been critical of some, some I really liked. This is your crowning glory. You did a magnificent job. Thank you.
Mr. Beekner, did you have something to say?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, go ahead with your resolution.
All right. Be resolved that the planning commission has considered an application to conditionally rezone certain property approximately 33.9 acres in size located within Section 22 of the city of Troy, east of Livernoy Road, north of Big Beaver Road, with property identification number PIN 88-20-22-101-034. Planning commission hereby recommends approval of the application to conditionally rezone the subject property from R1C to R2 zoning, as permitted pursuant to Section 16.04 of the city of Troy zoning ordinance. The recommendation is based on the following findings made pursuant to the standards outlined in the Troy zoning ordinance. The request does comply with the master plan, specifically the reference to having varying housing types. The rezoning would permit greater flexibility in the use and development of the property, it would allow variance in housing types. The conditions offered by the applicant reasonably protect the adjacent properties, appropriate screening setbacks, and transition. The rezoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning and land use, I believe it's a good transition, and the site can be adequately served with municipal water and sewer, which I have not heard that it can't, so I'm assuming it can be. Be it further resolved that the planning commission recommends the following design considerations, provide an updated wetland delineation.
Do we have a second? Mr. Beekner seconded. Okay, discussion.
I believe Mr. Krent had a point about the side elevation.
Madam Chairman, we should probably second the motion.
We did, Mr. Beekner seconded.
Gary did.
Betty didn't hear him, he's sitting next to him. A ninja.
He did it too fast, sorry, Mr. Hudson. Really quick, though, I guess maybe this is a question for Ms. Dufresne. I mean, I'm a little bit nervous about making amendments to a, it's a conditional rezoning, we cannot offer conditions, they can only offer...
Yeah, I mean, we can't offer, we can't ask them to put a condition on something that they're not offering, because they were tying, they've tied the conditions to their site plan, so...
So there's nothing really for us to be amending? We're basically, I, I mean, if I understand correctly, we can continue our conversation, city council's going to watch our discussion, and they can consider our discussion when they discuss.
And between now and when this gets to city council, the applicant can perhaps reconsider the screening issues that they've heard us, that they've heard you discuss, but in terms of the motion, putting any conditions, we cannot. I would rather that you didn't.
Yeah, so normally, I'm sorry, with a lot of our motions, it'll say on the conditions, the way that this motion's particularly worded, that the planning commission recommends the following site plan design considerations. So it's less binding than our typical recommendation language. I'm assuming it was written that way on purpose by our wonderful legal team. So items that would be attached to this motion would be more so the planning commission suggesting things than requiring things like a typical motion to approve would be. Still is my rough interpretation of it.
I stand by, I would rather you didn't add additional conditions that the applicant's not offering. The wetland delineation is one thing, because that's required as part of the final site plan, but, yeah. I mean, I understand your interpretation, but I would rather it be cleaner. But, yeah, I mean, I understand your interpretation, but I would rather it be cleaner without offering any additional conditions.
Mr. Beekner?
I will make a couple of comments. Ben and Brent, green space is, is in a good status mathematically, right? They've got plenty of green space, right? I, I always try to look at all sides. This is a fantastic option. We all live in the city. There is another option that could come out there that people in this room would not be happy with. I think, I think this is what I'm looking for. I don't live far from here and I don't work far from here. I think it's fantastic.
Mr. Hudson?
This is a conditional rezoning request, and it seems to me that we got, we have two options, deny it or approve it, and that's it.
Yep. So, so our discussion right now is just so we know that city council can listen to some of our concerns or suggestions, so they can take it under advisement when they discuss it. And also, as Mr. Savidant said, the applicant might change something on their way to the city council if there's something that we think is, is concerning.
Because keep in mind, I haven't seen a conditional rezoning agreement, I haven't reviewed one yet. I'm assuming Mr. Abdou, yeah, will be providing something, so perhaps that can be added.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krent.
As the architect, I spoke about the elevations and they just took it as a suggestion. And if they act on it, one way or another, great, you know, it's up to them. But that was just my suggestion, that's all.
A couple of, I have two things that I'd like city council to contemplate, really, and it's the, the city park that they're going to receive as a donation, which I think is wonderful and generous and nice, but they should explore the liability issues, the maintenance, the cost that goes with that, make sure they're prepared for that. And also, I don't know, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, but there might be some A D, ADA requirements in terms of parking and, and things that might be required if it's a city park. So, I'm just throwing it out there that those might be considerations. And then also, the traffic study. I did have some concerns about the left-hand turns both on, onto Livernoy, both from the east side and the west side. Anyone making a left-hand turn around there during peak hours, it's not good. I understand that it did, there was a study or a determination made that it did not warrant a light, so that was done and, and I'd like for a city council to consider that. And, you know, it has the level of service F rating, which is unacceptable during those peak hours, so that is definitely a concern. You know, they say that cars didn't queue more than one to two cars, but the time waiting for those turns was unacceptable. So, I, I do think it's something we need to consider and I'm not really sure what the solution is in terms of, you know, we can't require a light because it didn't warrant a light, but I don't know if in the future, if the traffic gets to a point where it's intolerable and, and this, this development impacts the road, whether there's some sort of arrangement that could be made with the developer in advance. But that would be something to explore. Yes, Mr. Savidant?
It wasn't verbalized as part of the, the motion, but the requirement for the updated wetland delineation is prior to final approval. So, we're not, between now and city council, we're not expecting a, an updated wetland delineation. And also, if I could, Madam Chair, just one quick thing. Some of you may have seen us off-camera, I was having whisper conversations with a few people, I just for the, to be fully transparent, Ms. Dufresne correctly pointed out that if you go to our online planning and development portal, there's the original application and the original letter that lists voluntarily offered conditions, and there's 15. And we, when Ben and I first looked at them, we suggested that some of the conditions weren't, weren't really valid and should, they could, should voluntarily consider removing those conditions. So, now there's only nine. So, Mr. Carlisle's PowerPoint showed the updated conditions of nine. But I just, for anyone watching at home or anyone who's looked at the portal and says, "Well, there's 15 on the portal, but only nine." So, we need to update the portal and we will.
Okay.
But I just wanted to explain why I was whispering with Ms. Dufresne and Mr. Thompson, just kind of clarifying that, so it's on the record.
Okay.
See, I wasn't going to highlight it, but thanks, Mr. Savidant.
I just, when people in the audience see people whispering, it's a bad look, so I'm just...
My original plan was to ask Mr. Thompson about it at the mic, but I didn't know if that was appropriate either, so Mr., yeah.
So, there you have it. That's why we were whispering.
The portal will be corrected.
Thank you, because I was curious about all that whispering.
Sorry.
All right. Any further discussion points?
There was a, a letter regarding this from the public. The person's not here, we all got a copy of that.
Yep.
Just wanted to note that there's, we did receive that and took it in consideration, at least I did.
It was handed out this evening because we received it after 4:30, so.
And it was a general objection to the rezoning?
Density, density issue.
Correct, okay.
Could be a lot worse.
Yes, Mr. Lambert?
I like about 80% of this plan. It's definitely better than what's there now. And I think there's a necessity to provide some additional density in, in exchange for the parkland. My main concern with this is the, the flats being proposed. I don't think it's a good fit for the adjoining neighborhood to the other side of Livernoy, so I'm going to be reluctantly voting no on the proposal.
You're, Mr. Lambert, so you're saying that the people who live across Livernoy on the west, you think that they'll be bothered by the stacked flats?
The flats are my major concern there.
In terms of...
Not a good fit for the neighborhood.
In terms of...
Not single-family homes. And I know that single-family homes are not necessary for the entire development, but I don't believe the flats are appropriate compatibility for the single-family homes across Livernoy.
Okay.
Interesting.
Does anyone else want to make a comment? Or are we prepared to vote?
I would like to.
Yep, Ms. Malala Hawley.
Just add to what you said earlier. Everything about the project I do like, as I already mentioned. The only, the only thing that I would like the city council, when they're looking into this, consider would be the fact that most every house that is going to be occupied would want to, if they have to take the freeway that is, would want to make a left turn onto Livernoy. And even, if I'm correct, even to go get their kids to the elementary school, they will have to make a left from this, from this development. So, I anticipate that left turn can become an issue. So, how city council would like to look into it and traffic light, we, we know about that, but if there is any other way to mitigate that, that would be appreciated.
All right. I think we're ready for the, for the vote.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question of legal? The design consideration that Mr. Fox put into the resolution, is that included?
I don't think he had it. Mr. Fox didn't, in his original resolution, he didn't have a design consideration.
I did mention the wetland delineation.
Wetland delineation.
Okay, and that's fine.
Thank you, that's what I wanted clear. Thank you.
Did you remove it? You just removed it?
It sounds like it doesn't need to be in the motion, so I have no reason to keep it.
And Mr. Beekner, you're fine, because you had seconded it. Okay.
Okay.
So, that part's not in it.
Thank you for the clarification.
And, and Madam Chair, just to reiterate, you mentioned it earlier, but for those, this is a recommendation, this is not approval or denial.
Correct.
If, if this is a positive recommendation, well, either, it's, it's going back to city council who has the final authority, so anyone who wants to continue to follow this can go to the city council, public hearing. There's no date set for that yet.
Okay, thank you. Everyone's clear, we're recommending or not recommending? And, and, right. So, so she's asking if we are recommending, that the resolution is recommending the proposal.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
No.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Porakis?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Oh, man, okay. We're moving on to the next item, which is a preliminary site plan review, JPLN 2025-0019. It's the proposed Somerset Retail, south of Big Beaver and east of Coolidge Highway, P I N 88-20-29-127-23 and 25, Section 29, Currently Zoned Big Beaver District. And I believe Mr. Carlisle's going to present.
Mr. Joe, do you have a video to show before?
With sound?
I, I had to stick it to him, a little bit. So, a little background, the applicant has recently purchased the Somerset Hotel site and as part of the redevelopment of the site, they're, they're proposing a mixed-use development on the south side of Big Beaver between Lakeview Drive and Butterfield Road. It's that area kind of outlined in yellow above. We do know that the southern side is Zoned Big Beaver Form-Based District. It's a proposed infill of the existing parking lots in the north end of the site. The applicant is proposing six new buildings with a mix of retail, service, and fast-food type uses. We do know in talking to the applicant, they don't have any final tenants at this point. These are going to be speculative buildings that will be, you know, either developed and, and serviced with uses, or they will, they will seek future tenants for these particular buildings. The, we do know that the existing uses will remain on the site, including the business center, the parking garage, hotel, and the attached restaurant. Again, six new buildings constructed along Big Beaver. Building five fronts on both Lakeview and Big Beaver, and building one fronts on both Butterfield and Big Beaver as well. The buildings range in size from 4,100 square feet, which is the one on Butterfield and Big Beaver, to over 12,000 square feet, which is that larger middle building, right in the middle of the site. All the existing buildings on the site will remain, and the applicant's proposing a shared parking arrangement for all the uses and buildings on the site. With regards to bulk standards, they do comply with all the frontage on Big Beaver at the 10-foot build-to line. They are seeking two deviations from the planning commission. The first is a deviation of 18.6 feet for the building at Lakeview. The applicant notes that there are some existing easements in that location that would prohibit them from putting it at 10 feet. In addition, they're seeking a waiver for the building one on Butterfield of 19.6 feet. Again, same issue, easements existing along Butterfield. These are waivers that the planning commission can grant as part of the site plan approval, and we note that all other bulk standards have been met with the development. With regards to access and circulation, there are a number of access points already allocated into the development. Access will not change, the, the existing spots will remain. There's access, multiple access sites on Big Beaver, multiple access points on Lakeview, there's access points on Gulfview, and there are multiple access points off Butterfield. We know that there is a sidewalk network or system that's provided around each building, as well as adjacent to Big Beaver, as well as Lakeview and Butterfield. And there are internal walkways between Lakeview and Butterfield, as well as the existing developments on the site. Parking, I do know that in our previous, our, our memo that's in the report, there was a question about the compliance with parking. We do note that they have complied with the required parking. There are 1,300-plus sites on-site and they have provided the required 1,300 as necessary. One of the issues that did come up is there is no dedicated loading spaces on these buildings. It's pretty typical these days that the buildings that front on, on the major mile roads do not have a dedicated loading space. Loading is typically done through smaller box trucks and other means, where they simply park in the drive-alves and unload and load at certain points of the day. The applicant is seeking relief from a loading space requirement. Again, it's a deviation the planning commission has granted in the past and is able to grant tonight as part of the site plan. That covers that. With regards to landscape and lighting, they are compliant with all the landscaping and lighting requirements on the site. Floor plans and elevations, they are providing what we think is a pretty interesting architectural design for the site. The building materials include a mix of brick with slat, wood panels, limestone, veneers, and metal roofing. The primary colors are a mix of black, gray, and beige. We do note that some interesting architectural elements, including a covered walkway or alleyway between Building 5.1 and 5.2, which is the building on the corner of, of, of Lakeview and Big Beaver. We do note that they have provides kind of speculative shell floor plans, however, because they don't have tenants, they do not have detailed floor plans for the planning commission to consider. There are two points of discussion that we think the planning commission should, should discuss with the applicant with regards to elevations. The first are a issue of entrances. And I'm not talking about entrances for residential, that we spent a lot of time talking about the last couple of weeks, but these are entrances for, for commercial buildings. There is a requirement in the Big Beaver zoning district that any frontage of a, of a building that fronts on a street has to have an entrance. So, this would require a building entrance on, on all the Big Beaver frontages, as well as those corner buildings have to want, have to want on, have to have one on Butterfield and Lakeview. There was a little confusion on, I think, both of our ends, because the floor plans that they had submitted do show actual entrances on those elevations. However, the elevations that they did submit as part of the review do not have frontages, any frontages on Big Beaver. And we note that Building one, which is located on Butterfield, does not have a functional entrance on Butterfield, and Building five does not have a functional entrance on Lakeview. These are ordinance requirements that the planning commission can't grant waivers from. I did talk to the applicant's architect before the meeting. He noted that he thinks this is an item that they, they can address, because again, these are speculative buildings and they don't have tenants and they can put these in as part of the requirements. The second point of discussion is, is regard to transparency. Similarly to entrances, we require that all buildings that front on streets, public streets, have a 50% transparency requirement. We note that Building 5.2, which is along Lakeview, and Building one, which is along Butterfield, does not have that transparency requirement. The applicant notes in their application that they're seeking a transparency, transparency alternative. That is not permitted for elevations that front on roadways. So, essentially, they are required by ordinance to meet that 50% transparency requirement. Again, I spoke to the architect's applicant before the meeting. He thinks that they can meet that requirement as well with revised elevations. I have a number of pictures of, of show that the various elevations. I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure which rendering suffices for which building, so maybe the applicant's architect could come up and explain this when their chance to present, what these are actually showing. So, again, you can tell there's a variety of mix of materials and architectural styles that make up the proposed development. This is that covered walkway between Building 5.1 and 5.2, again, on the corner of Butterfield, I'm sorry, Lakeview and, and Big Beaver. This is a site plans in the Big Beaver District, so there are design standards that the planning commission should consider. This is also a site plan, so the planning commission has three standards to consider. So, we are recommending that the planning commission applicant discuss compliance with the Big Beaver standards, compliance with the site plan standards, increased setbacks along Lakeview and Butterfield, as well as a loading space waiver. We do suggest that if the planning commission approves a site plan, the condition that they comply with all transparency requirements, as well as all building entrance requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Beekner?
Is this, sometimes I'm Captain Obvious, but is this just overparked forever? There's too much parking going on here?
Well, there's two, there's two ways to look at it.
Is it overparked by practicality, perhaps? However, there is an ordinance requirement that requires 1,300 parking spaces and they are meeting the 1,300 parking spaces. I will do note that, it's my understanding that the applicant will hopefully, or wants to come in for a phase two for the remaining portion of the site. At that time, it may be the time that we look at overall parking for the entire development, because that would be a much more significant change to the site than what they're proposing. But they are meeting the ordinance requirements with the number of parking spaces they have on-site.
Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Carlisle, in one of your comments, or maybe your staff comments, you said 21.8% of open space is proposed where a minimum of 30% is required. And then it says on seat, on sheet C2, the applicant labels this as an existing nonconformity. Can you address that?
Yeah, so, there's two issues that, that come into play with, with Big Beaver Form-Based District. The first is landscaping requirements, and there's, there's a 15% landscaping requirement on-site, and the applicant has, has met that requirement. The second issue is open space. And open space takes a variety, by definition, it takes a variety of means. And open space takes a variety, by definition, it takes a variety of means. The open space requirement in the Big Beaver District for these building forms is 30%. We note that they're converting existing, basically, parking area into building. They're actually reducing the existing nonconformity of the site. We have treated issues like this with infill. We encouraged repurposing of parking lots, et cetera. That if they are reducing the nonconformity, we do find that that is sufficient to meet the ordinance requirements with regards to issues of open space and the like. So they are reducing nonconformity. We meet that as a compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carlisle. I think we'll go ahead and invite the applicant up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jordan Jonah. I represent my family company, A.F. Jonah Development and Management Company. And I have a whole team behind me that could answer any more complex questions. But we are excited to bring another development to Big Beaver Road. We've been developing this road, on this road, for the last north of dozen years, and they seem to get better and better. And we took a lot of pride in designing the site, where we've broke it up into multiple buildings, just because of the length of the project, the frontage that we have there, and incorporating a lot of open space for public and private use. That could be used for seating, for walkability, and connectability of the whole site. We are going to expand the window lines, which wouldn't change the elevations much to reach the transparency issue, and the rear doors, rear or front doors, which will be added to the site. But that also depends on where the tenants are and how big the tenants are. So the doors do usually move in these type of developments until we have a set tenant going into the space. It's really where the doors usually line up in the layouts and how they work their transparency with the size of their space there. Ultimately, we are looking forward to this development and happy to answer any questions you guys may have for us tonight.
Yep, Mr. Fox?
I think I definitely like building on parking lots, as opposed to building on, you know, in green spaces. I definitely think that you guys have that going for you in terms of the project. I guess I wanted to inquire, what are your thoughts in regards to foot traffic from your existing uses? Because I know a number of uses were talked about for these potential new developments. I'm picturing like somebody staying in a hotel, they look outside, they see some kind of fast casual, you know, restaurant that you kind of move in, or something to that sort of. I guess, how do you picture pedestrian circulation working? Just kind of cutting across parking lots, or?
We did add sidewalks or crosshatched throughout the site. So the whole site is connected, even to the sidewalks on the major road. So if you look right between the hotel, which is on the western side of the site plan, and there's a crosswalk that connects to the middle retail building, the beginning of the middle retail building, and also the eastern office building. So we did connect walkability through the whole site, through the sidewalks, integrating the whole site.
While we're on this topic, I drove over there the other day, and there were many islands with curbs. Is that going to be changed? Because it didn't seem to match this.
Yes, they will be changed.
Okay.
So we're adding a lot of green space in the islands, and just to break up the whole parking lot, so it's not a sea bash fault. So there will be added islands, excuse me, I don't know, added islands, because I don't know exactly what's there right now, but there are islands that will be moved.
Okay.
And it gives a better circle around the site, so people can access cars and walking.
Because when I went over there, the circulation was pretty bad in terms of connectivity with what it's going to become now, which is a much more integrated space.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that those, for example, when you come in off Big Beaver, it was sort of a straight shot lined with curb?
That does change.
All the way to like a garage or something? Or you know what I mean?
That does change. The eastern entrance, that ramp to the garage, does stay also. So there is, the west, the eastern, western entrance there, that does change also, because it's a long drive-in with no immediate turns. There will be broken up and changed.
Okay. But you're not changing the turns off of Big Beaver?
No. We are not touching any ingress or egress for the site.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? Yep, Mr. Krenn.
I want to congratulate you on an architecturally exciting project. I like the variety incorporated, and kudos to that architect who came up with those things, especially the covered walkway area. It's just really nice to see.
Thank you. That's Stucky Vitality Architecture. They are here today, too, and I'm sure you heard that comment. Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
Thank you. Do you have a business relationship with the Somerset Inn, or are you purchasing that, or?
We own it, generally.
Okay. So I assume you'll be maybe enhancing that Somerset Inn sign a little bit, since you'll be putting some buildings kind of in the way of it?
There will be some enhancements to the building. I couldn't tell you the extent of what's going on right now.
Because I see the little sign here on Google Maps, and it's kind of small, and I was wondering if they were concerned about the visibility of their inn with the new buildings going behind it there, so.
Fortunately, we do own the entire site.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr., either one of you, really, I'm not sure who's running the computer, but Mr. Savadon, could you put up the picture of Building one, the elevation?
Can you give me a page number?
Maybe 321, kind of guessing.
Nailed it.
Yeah, it is right, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I know we had some issues with the, not that we had issues, but the issue of transparency, right? So the west side of the building, which faces the parking lot, which is fronting Big Beaver, is very transparent, and it's your entrance. It's almost as if that was reversed and put onto the Butterfield side, that would solve that problem. I mean, I'm not saying you have to flip the building, but the idea is that the entrance and the transparency, it's like you did it, but it's just on the wrong side of the building.
North, south, west, okay. So the west side should be on the east side?
I mean, maybe you can explain a better, Mr. Carlisle.
So, Jordan, this, sorry, Mr. Jonah, this elevation is the one that fronts on Butterfield. And this is the elevation that's interior to fronts on the other building next to it. The purpose is really to have this type of elevation and design be the one that actually fronts on Butterfield for, you know, architectural aesthetics and pedestrian and motor vehicle travel.
Exactly. Mike Blannick with Stucky Vitality Architects. Yeah, we tried, we looked at the ordinance, we thought we could get, because it's angled there, that we would have a transitional materials, which would give us some credit to the transparency, but I was informed that's not correct, the way we interpreted. So we'll just increase the, it's like, I think it's 16% short we are right now with that elevation. So we're just going to increase the glazing to make it work. And the entrances will be on Big Beaver, as required by the ordinance, will obviously take care of that access as well.
So building number five, I believe, or five B?
5.1, yeah, five is the other one.
That one also has that, that's where, that's the angular.
Angle, yes.
And I didn't know if that meets our zoning ordinance in terms of fronting an entrance on Big Beaver and Lakeview, or if they have to put one on each. I'm just curious about that.
We have treated, in buildings like that, where there's our actual entrance at the corner, we have treated that as an entrance on both elevations.
Okay, so that would be okay. And then I do think, though, that on that building, you had more transparency on the east side, which was not on Lakeview. I'm trying to see if I have that. I didn't write that one down. But anyway, I mean, you know that you've got to meet those requirements on that Lakeview side as well?
Correct, yep.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant while they're up, or the architect?
I guess I'll ask one.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Beekner.
I know you can't speak to the details of what kind of stores, but like generally, a few restaurants, pharmacy, coffee, what are you thinking? Phone?
It's very hard for us to market this to tenants right now, just because we don't know what would be approved and go from there. But I could tell you, majority of the retail that we've done up and down the streets have all been anywhere from restaurants, to fast casual, to service, and retail. So it'll be a mix of typical tenants, and they range from different sizes. I don't have anyone I could say that we have signed a lease with here. I'm sure we'll get a lot of interest, because it is a popular site. It's good-looking, in my mind, and busy area. So it would be a combination of fast casual, retail, restaurant, and service.
Cool. How many units?
It could be broken up any which way.
Okay. What, between what and what?
Typically, and this may change depending on sites, typically, smaller units are about 1,500, and it goes up from there, depending on what type of user it is. And we do meet all the, we will meet all the requirements for the zoning district here with the retail, so.
It's a great spot, cool.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a beautiful, it's a really beautiful development.
Thank you.
I think we're all set. Thank you. Mr. Savadon, I have a question for you in terms of things that can go there. I mean, I was happy to hear them say fast casual, because it was referred to earlier as fast food. What prevents, I mean, do we have rules that a McDonald's can't be there, and a pharmacy? I mean, those things aren't allowed.
We don't allow, cannot be a drive-through use.
Cannot be a drive-through use?
There's no drive-throughs permitted on the Big Beaver District, except for banks. But again, the site plan shown does not have a drive-through.
Right, right.
So if they did come back with a bank, they would have to, you would have to come back and revise the site plan, it's a conditional use. There's different things that would be considered, special use, there'd be different things that are considered. So a drive-through use is not permitted in this district.
Okay.
So we would allow McDonald's here, just not a drive-through.
Well, in Europe, the McDonald's do look like that. I mean, they're beautiful buildings, and they don't have a drive-through, so I guess we could get that. Okay, that was that question. Okay, so then they mentioned that it could be divided up into, I mean, I guess when I initially looked at it, I was thinking of these five or six buildings, and then they just mentioned that they might partition it into many more businesses, and I guess I hadn't thought about that. So we approve this, they can put walls and make 11 doors on the 11 entrances if they end up with 11 spaces?
Yes, theoretically, and each space independently is going to have to meet the transparency requirements.
Right, on the Big Beaver side.
Yes, now, it, I'll try to be really succinct. So here's what, I'm showing you how the sausage gets made a little bit. So they show awesome buildings, really, I think, really modern, cool buildings. Their architect, I think, did a fantastic job. What happens is then, they, let's say theoretically, they get approved tonight, and then they leave here, and then Mr. Blannick goes about his life, and then Mr. Jordan's company owns the asset. And then what happens is they get a potential tenant, the tenant brings in their own architect. That architect could be from Troy, but could be from Cincinnati, or Abilene, or Atlanta. And then that architect now builds out the space. Now, that architect may or may not have ever been to Troy. So they may or may not understand our transparency requirements. So where we need the communication is either Mr. Jordan or Mr. Jonah's staff explains what the transparency requirements are. But nine times out of 10, what happens is the architect submits build-out plans, and then I see him, and if they don't, they're not transparent, they don't meet the transparency requirements, I deny them. I can give you, example of that is Seven Sunday's Coffee, which is just over here, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Jordan's building. If you want a great coffee, go to Seven Sunday's Coffee, they're fantastic. But the first rendition we saw did not meet the transparency requirements. They used it as back of store, and they didn't have dining there, and I denied it. And the owner contacted me, you know, what's up? And I explained it, and then he fixed it. And if you go there, it's awesome. It's an area where you can see the activity, and so it's, it's a, and what happens is they'll, Mr. Jonah will sign a tenant for however many years, then we have to repeat it again with the next tenant. So it's ongoing, but our job is to make sure we get compliance. And what happens is, and I'm not picking on Mr. Jonah, he does an awesome job along the corridor, there's other owners as well. It's just ongoing, and with only two enforcement officers, you know, people put stuff on windows and get kind of creative, and it's an ongoing thing, but.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Okay, we're, I'm going to open it up to public comment at this point. If anyone's here to, wants to speak about this? It's not a public hearing, but if anyone's here to talk about this?
Yeah, I know.
All right, seeing no one, we'll turn it back to Planning Commission for discussion. Maybe we can put a resolution. I think there were a few things, though, when we do the resolution, so we're not doing it piecemeal. If we are interested in these waivers that they're seeking, there's the two setbacks on Lakeview and Butterfield, and there's also, they're seeking a loading space waiver. We're comfortable with that as a city? I just had a question about the trash compactor. I've never heard of that before, and it seems, sounds like it's something loud. I mean, why are we doing, why are they asking for a trash compactor instead of a trash, like a dumpster?
Trash compacts are actually fairly, fairly common in a lot of commercial, especially strip multi-tenant buildings.
Okay, and they're, all right, so no special screening?
They have to, they have to meet the screening requirements of the ordinance, but there's nothing above and beyond for compactor versus a...
It's not loud, isn't it loud?
I don't think they're that loud.
Okay, all right.
I mean, there's, Mr. Jonah's more knowledgeable than any of us in the room, but my experiences are modern trash compactors are not that loud.
Okay.
Just to comment on the trash compactor versus a dumpster, every morning roughly at 5:15, I hear the slamming steel tops of garbage, yeah, garbage, not the compacts, but the dumpsters.
The dumpsters, you're right, you're right.
Oh my gosh, coming from Big Beaver.
Those are allowed, too, you're right.
Yeah, and I live, you know, a good quarter mile away, so I hear those slamming things. So I would say a compactor may be a good alternative, quiet.
And they don't have reverse noises, yeah, beep, beep, beep.
Oh my gosh, yes, that, yeah. It's about like a rooster every morning for me, except on the weekends, thank God.
So does anyone want to, you want to do a resolution? Okay.
Resolved that Planning Commission approves the preliminary site plans as submitted pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance for the proposed Somerset Retail located south of Big Beaver Road, east of Coolidge Highway, P I N 88-20-29-127-1023 and -025, within Section 29, approximately 15.7 acres in size, currently zoned Big Beaver, subject to the following, that it meets, the project meets all required transparency and entrance requirements from the city, that it, that we allow a waiver for increased setbacks along Lakeview and Butterfield, and we will waive the loading space requirement.
Well done. Do we have a second? Mr. Faison? Okay, discussion. Yep, Mr. Lambert?
I think it's a great plan. It's nice to fill in all of those empty parking spots with some nice buildings, so looking forward to the construction of those buildings there.
Anyone else? Yep, Ms. Malala Hawley.
Absolutely. Kudos to the team who came up with this design. It is absolutely a beautiful design, very modern, very chic. So thank you for bringing that to Troy.
Did we need to, do we need to comment at all about the open space? No, okay. And then the other items in terms of the site plan review, we all feel that it met all the standards? All right, we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to it as well. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is to discuss our 2026 meeting schedule. I actually think that there was a copy left at our seats. Does anyone have any issues with any of the dates, or would like to recommend any changes? Does everyone have their 2026 calendars squared away? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lambert.
You don't have a conflict with school holidays in there?
Thank you for bringing that up. And no, we don't. We, it doesn't, it does not conflict with the spring It does not conflict with the spring break, or the... Oh. No, I don't think it conflicts with the President's Day either.
Okay, good.
I didn't check that one, but I don't believe it does. So yeah, because I think we're good there. And then there was a note to notice that there is only one November meeting, one December meeting, but it ended up that that's what we did this year as well.
So may I make a suggestion on this point? Your bylaws say, in section, whatever, Section 3, that you're required to have two meetings a month, and the second and the fourth Tuesday of each month. Can I recommend this body may want to consider amending those bylaws? Because now it's been at least two years, if not more, that you haven't complied with those bylaws. Just a suggestion that I'm going to put out there. Because it says, you know, if a regular meeting date falls on or near a legal holiday, the Planning Commission may schedule a meeting on a suitable alternate date in the same month. So you're supposed to have two meetings every month. I mean...
Let me ask you something. Sometimes we cancel meetings because an applicant withdraws. How does that...
And that's fine, and we're following Open Meetings Act. But I'm just suggesting, if you're going to approve a schedule that is not complying with your bylaws, you may want to consider changing your bylaws. And I'm not telling you how to change them. Right now, you're technically not complying with the bylaws.
Okay. So in terms of procedure, I mean, is that something... Can we make that... Can someone make a motion to amend our bylaws right now?
I would rather that you could consider what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And then maybe Mr. Lambert. I know Mr. Lambert likes the button. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'll write up something.
Yeah. Oh, I see, okay. So why don't we hold off on voting on the schedule? I don't think it's urgent.
We have one more meeting, so if Mr. Savidon's okay with that, yeah.
Okay, so maybe, Mr. Lambert, you can forward some language. We can vote on that, then we can approve the meeting schedule as well.
We typically do this in December. One of the Planning Commission members asked if we could get it a little bit ahead, so that the Planning Commission member could look at scheduling a vacation or something. So we can certainly put this on the December agenda for sure.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and table that. We'll revisit it. Okay, now it's public comment for items on the agenda. Is anyone here who'd like to speak about something that we already discussed tonight? All right, seeing no one coming forward, we will move on to Planning Commission comment. I'm going to start with Mr. Fox.
None from me. Thank you.
Mr. Beekner? Mr. Hudson?
Thank you.
Mr. Faison?
I thought there were two great projects.
That's all.
Mr. Lambert?
I just want to comment, I wasn't able to attend last night's city council meeting where everyone was giving kudos to Councilwoman Hodrick after serving 12 years on city council, but appreciated her comments and thanked her for her service, and she had nice comments about the Planning Commission as well. So we appreciate her service, so...
Ms. Malala Hawley? I agree with Mr. Faison. Two beautiful, architecturally so modern, chic projects that came to us today. Would love to see more of these kind of projects come our way.
Yes, I too, like Mr. Lambert, said, kudos to our Ellen, who's retired from, well, no longer one of our council members. She served tremendously over a lot of tumultuous times, mainly with the city management, et cetera, and she did a fantastic job of researching it. All of her comments always had a lot of research behind them, which I really appreciated. In addition, she always appreciated what we do. She did watch virtually all of our meetings. I talked with her on occasion about our meetings, and she'd say, yeah, she liked this, she didn't like that. And it was just, it was just a good feeling that somebody on council was really serious about paying attention to what we're doing, and that made me feel good. In addition, we've got another planner's gathering. This one's going to be December 11th. It's going to be on legislative and judicial update. Whoa. We get a little bit about the law. So anyway, that's December 11th, from 10:00 in the morning till 11:00 in the morning. It's a webinar.
Thank you. Mr. Tagle?
We may have discussed this, but is there a meeting in two weeks? It's the holiday week. There is none?
Not a meeting.
Thank you.
The next meeting is December...
9th, I think.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Thank you.